Yeah.
So we didn't get four.
Miniature library. It'll be something.
Something.
Oh, you're in the world. Those are the ones.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, happy to see you.
Yeah.
There's one vegetable. I'm a friend of the chicken.
Vines.
Oh, I wonder, yeah. On the flight.
Well, my husband can do some vines.
One there. They're wild. They're tall. Yeah. Great place. Great book. Are they on post or?
No, I think you're going to keep them.
Yeah.
I have a recommendation.
Oh, as you always say. Oh, it's still. Then go in for one hundred forty two. That's Chicago that works. Uh, and yeah, look out. Come on, we can anything's, uh, you know.
Yeah, no, no, um, I would just need.
That point we put next to the other.
Yeah. Day or something. Or happy day. It's over. Other group comes in happy. I don't want to put. Anybody else too much.
Okay.
But I think we can get maybe half the people to go with three persons. To the. Thank you.
The time is seven o'clock. Uh, we'll call this meeting to order. Can I have a roll call? Uh, Bradley Barker.
Question.
Alex Basset.
Present.
Claire McMahon. Dr. Beck.
Present.
Don Reck. All right, we have a call. All right. If everyone can take a moment to review your agenda. Tonight we'll have two COAs. Uh, the E nine one one signs and then we'll review our inventory progress. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? All favor. Quick. Motion passes moving on to two A. Uh, this will be for forty five, four ninety five mile street. COA was prepared. Uh, yeah, would you like to stay there? You're all on the joint dealer's choice.
I'm just sitting here. All right. Uh, it's it's not a repair. It's a complete replacement of the brook. All right. And, uh, the we have a sample of the material. Yeah. The the visible part of the brook is metal. Uh, at some point, somebody replaced the back part of the jingles. But the whole will now be metal. That's approximately the same color as what it is now.
One second. Okay. Yeah, sounds good to me. Um.
Yeah.
Still any issue?
I believe so.
Um, the protocol is not going to change at all.
Yeah.
So we have. You guys have any ready to come up?
No, do you have any questions, thoughts, concerns? Uh, can I have a motion?
I make a good for you. Yes.
Um, uh, let me get a roll call on this. Uh, Bradley Barker.
All right.
Uh, Alex Basset.
Yes.
And then motion passes. Right. Thank you, Lainey. Thank you for taking the time to join us tonight.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
We got.
Yep. All squared away.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, that was easy.
Yeah. We should, we try to try to keep everybody in and out in the quick and timely manner. All right, so now we are going to move forward to two B. Uh, for the COA of one ninety West Main Street. Uh, this is Bruce Park and the little free library. Lainey, would you like to join us here? Oh, you want you want to join us today? Yeah, come on up. Come on, all right.
So we were back in April. So I believe it was April twenty fifth. I had a experience in town. Um, called the Stasburger Festival. And one of the purposes of the event was to bring people in town and just have a nice fun reading. Another part of the event was to get that free little library that looks something. A little strongly here or something a bit like, um, not that exact model. But, um, something where you can put. Books in town. Um, I think Bruce Park would be a really great place to, um. Build it and we have the. The measurements here and I have a sample of what, um, I would like the. I have a picture of the same one as well, but it looks very similar to what this. It's very light thing. Um, nothing that, um, is too bright or garish, but it's something that we'll try.
Are we restricted to, uh, time appropriate? I guess for the like, uh. I know something about.
Uh, for this, um. I I feel the time appropriate piece would fall more like on the. Buildings, that kind of stuff or a stand, uh, so this would be a stand on. Right, where it would have its own posts. It wouldn't be like connected directly to a building. Okay, um. I I would. Yeah, I I don't think that I would hold it to the same code as a building.
We need to straighten out.
What's that?
So we need to straighten out. Yeah. My bad.
You don't like the grass.
Uh, I thought it did pretty good in the breeding, but, uh. Yeah, I think, uh, as long as the final location goes to town. Uh.
These colors are fairly, uh, lipi-choring.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Can, uh, or do you have any further discussion comments, questions to tell us?
How many books?
Do you have any?
Um, well, I was talking to Mr. Set and it would be about three shells. We did this three shells, three shells. Um, yeah.
Oh, Lord.
Um, so. I wanted to reconsider if you would like, um, the hardback. There shouldn't be a lot of room for a lot of stuff.
Now, I think that's all question marks. I'm going to ask this you. I should.
We'll get that roll call again. Uh, Mr. Brad Barker.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Alex Basset.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Dr. Beck. Oh, I can't vote. Yeah, um, motion passes.
All good.
All. Thank you so much. We look forward. That's a great idea to be able to read by your turn the part.
Thank you so much.
But someone's going to get served up.
Thank you.
All right, uh, so we will move to. Uh, I guess it's doesn't even have a letter, but, uh, we'll move to not agree matters from the public. Uh, I know we'll be talking, uh, at, uh, five A, but do we have anybody in the computer land? Doesn't not yet have a current development of the line computer land. I don't have anyone that's up there. And all right, I'm going to close matters from the public. Uh, and consultation with any property owners. Do you have anything in regards to your property that we want to sell for sale tonight? So I will close the matter of four A for consultation with property owners and attendants. We'll move to five A discussion of E nine eleven signs and HRV and EC. Like the.
Um, it's been a while since I've been here last. If you recall, I brought a request to, uh, for E nine one one signs, which are used for emergency. Services, medical, police, fire to, uh, in order to help them locate a property, a given property in town. We currently have problems in that we don't have consistent reflective sign on all the properties. And the ones that do, they're not necessarily consistently placed. So the aim, uh, we put in a grant to actually fund it to get the signs, uh. Purchase the signs for the properties in town. We, today we found out we did get the grant award. We asked for eight thousand dollars. We only got a partial fund, but it's five thousand dollars. So we're going to re-scope hoping to get everybody in the historic district of town. A reflective sign on their property in the same place so that emergency services can readily locate any property in town. And that they all be of the same color and format so that there's consistency in town. So I brought the different, uh, styles. You'll see on the second page, there's on the back page, there's different sort of decorative styles. And there's also different colors, brown. The current ones that are in place are a bright blue. Uh, they're sometimes on mailbox, box posts or things like that. Uh, we would pay to have them replaced with a more decorative and historic type of sign. And I was talking to Alex and others about volunteer, uh, crew to go around and install them for people. They're unable to install them on the properties for them stuff. So this would some be something that the town wants. So from you all, I need your thoughts on where the signs might be best placed. I do have a rec- recommendation from the fire chief. Uh, and then what style and color you think they should be.
Okay. Uh. My thing is to partially the homeowner. And virtually no. If it's. The house is stronger there. I think some houses on the, so like nine houses, for example, alongside a porch. But other houses might be lost. Uh, just if my fortune is such a true.
And and just and just for information, chief currently did say that. That is somewhat problematic for them when a homeowner decides because, um. They not, you know, it's in the middle of the night. They get in a nine one one call. They're rushing to a home. They're trying to find it in the dark and they don't know, is there a sign on the mailbox? Do they need to be looking on the porch? Do they need to be looking here? Um, we have different types of properties in town. So for example, the weed row building across the street, there's a business in front that has an address. If the people call nine one one who live in the apartments behind and say, and they give that address. The fire department pulls up to the front of the building. He doesn't realize that where they really need to go is in the back of the building.
What is the chief?
The chief recommends that they be put to the right or left of the front door. So that they always know.
Right, right.
Where to look, right or left to the front door. And then the mayor actually thought that brown would be the best color for the signs. So there's a brown reflective sign only because all the historic markers that you see pretty much in towns are all brown. So that was his thinking. Now I believe that you, I have no. I I'll accommodate whatever guidance is given.
I feel in the presence of emergency services, we would not want to have them matching other signs. We want to have the emergency sign be as.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I I I appreciate the. Opinion for having it look uniform with some other signs, but I think we do want to. We're having this on, we want to have it catch your attention rather than blend in with.
Yeah, the green is actually, Savannah County uses the green. This green on the back is more of a historic green and sort of a bright garish green, um, that you see. Um, the bright blue might be, you know, might offend homeowner sense of, I have a historic property and now I have this bright blue. Sign in front of my yard. Uh, there's a, yeah, there's a red marker there. So this particular sign comes in green, red, blue and white. As well as the white on black, there's black on white. So but that's the, that's, uh, we could also do white with black. It is. It is.
Oh, now. Are these going to be mandatory for people to have on their?
Yes, I'm going to bring in ordinance, um, to town council to put an ordinance. This is especially, uh, poignant right now when we're talking about Bird Street going on. I'd like to make sure that the developer puts these E nine one one signs on all the new properties that would be built. Uh, whether it's East Village or on Bird Street. And that we can set the tone by this is the standard for what the historic properties already have. And we'd like that standard preserved going forward.
I think they fall outside of the purview of the historic district, don't they?
Oh, yeah, but we can pass an ordinance for the town, not necessarily the historic district, the council. Right.
Right, but then you would.
Following.
It would then encompass the remainder of the town.
Yes.
Good, I cheer you. Good, thanks.
Where does your color an emergency?
It is.
Yeah, but we don't want to mess up the portfolios. They're well art historical buildings.
Yeah, it it's with this already having the white and blue signs. That they're predominantly like with a blue background.
Yeah.
But I could think keeping it consistent across the board, it might be.
Now, the blue is very bright. I don't know if I've seen them on some of the properties. It's really bright.
Yeah.
That's why the green is sort of like toned down.
I like, I don't think a a garage blue.
Yeah.
It's it's really going to fly that well in a historic district.
Would be great covered people that currently have the signs that have their updated new.
Yes. We would purchase the signs. That's what the grant was applied for. We would purchase the signs for those people so that they would not have to incur any costs. And we can either let the homeowner, we can tell them where to put them. We can let the homeowner install them themselves if they're more comfortable with that. Or we can have our crew, we can assign a date for the crew to come here and put the sign for them.
And what happens to the people that aren't? Is they have to get like eighty percent of the historic district covered with these signs? And do the other people have to pay?
I, it's not my intention that anybody should have to pay. Um.
Before.
I, you know, I'm hoping that if there would be budget left over, we would be able to fund the other ones. They're about thirty some odd dollars per sign. So I don't know how many, do you know roughly how many residents there are in businesses in town? Have you, do you have any sense?
Inventory ended up being, uh, almost a hundred and sixty, hundred and eighty buildings that we. Now that's only for our inventory that we split up. Um, yeah.
So a hundred and sixty times, let's say forty with tax and shipping, what does that come to?
We're seeing a hundred.
Yeah, so we'd be short fourteen hundred if we had to.
Now, is that, is that for the most basic of the signs?
No, that's the more decorative signs. I have to look at the pricing for the others. Do you want a more decorative sign in historic district or do you want it straight up and down signs?
I I think doing basic would be good because I I would rather make sure everyone is covered and.
I think they're about thirty five, thirty, thirty five. Now I have to shop around. I only checked one or two places. It could be that we can get them cheaper and if we get a volume discount, it may be cheaper still.
Right.
But I'm going to try to do the best I can to get everyone covered, including like the apartments on the back side. I'd like to get some arrow signs to indicate that there are apartment in the back. So that each address has a unique number. So if it is, I don't know, seven fifteen, let's say across the street. Then there's seven fifteen A, B and C in the back. They all have a unique identifier. And then we're going to put out some documentation to people to guide them on how they would call nine one one. Because chief curves, they made the comment of a lot of times people just say, you know, I'm at on this street or am I, you know. They're in emergency, they're panicked and whatnot.
Right.
So I think a little coaching and information people on how to appropriately call nine one one if they have an emergency in their business or residence. That would go a long way.
So how, we talked, um. Uh, when we talked before about indicating that there are other apartments and there.
Yeah, that's why I said that arrow would tell them like the front of the building would have its address marker. And it would have an arrow to indicate that there are properties on the back side.
What do you do about the side? Go to the, go to the side and enter them.
The side would have its own address marker. It would be, you know, seven fifteen A and then B and C on the back side. But there would be some indicator that says there are more than one residence on this property.
Could we look in a corner, put? Two, three, four. To to indicate the. Apartment.
Yeah.
You know, up there.
You know, even in friends or something like that, we could put, you know, seven fifteen three, right? There's three residents in this building. Yeah, that's a good idea.
I mean, there are some though, but fourteen.
That's right. That's exactly right.
We do have a couple of properties that are not directly visible from the road.
Uh huh.
Um.
So in that case, I'd like to get a road marker for them.
Okay.
And then a marker on their residence.
Good deal because, uh, next it's Stewart Munson's house. We have a long driveway that takes you up the hill near. You can't see the property, so it's not part of our inventory. But Claire and I noticed it as we were doing our walk and we watched them driving in and we're like, oh, that, there's property up there. And, um, so it's just something for.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. And some of those properties with long driveways already have something on their nail post and brush.
Yeah.
So in that case, we could just leave that there. But just for the additional marker on the residence, because what the chief said is when you go down some of these driveways. Sometimes there's multiple houses and there's no markers to tell you what houses on that road.
Right.
So we're going to do the best job we can to get each driveway, road and house marked when it's appropriate. Right, but if we need extra money, I'm hoping that we might have extra money in the town budget. Or we'll do a fundraiser or something like that to cover the debt. That's why we asked for eight thousand, but we got five thousand. We got what we got.
Which, I mean, if we if we kept it at the one sixty and, uh, uh, there was thirty a sign that came up. I think it was forty eight hundred.
Yeah, we're jumped on it.
So, yeah, I don't know. So I've I've given my opinion. Um, I I'm going to open it up to both of you for comments, questions, concerns. And then I'll call for, well, actually, we don't have anything to vote on. So this is just the discussion. Yeah.
Well, are you looking to go with the recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, I I want to go with your guidance unless you tell me you don't have a strong opinion. What I'm hearing is the straight up and down seems to have some kind of, um, momentum with the, with the ARB. And the color green potentially.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
Green and white.
Yes.
Three with white letter.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah.
What do we do with people who need to have it on? Post. Can we go for the post? They pay for the post.
Well, typically when they have a post up, they have a mailbox.
That's true.
And they'll, um, we'll put it on the mailbox. Most properties have that. In other counties, you know, the county actually did this for them. Uh, I know Buckingham, the county paid to have all of that done for the residents. And, you know, as part of their effort, but, you know, we're so small, we're going to do what we can to keep the community as safe. And help out our first responders as best we can.
Well, you guys can, well, given the, uh, given the not to say.
So it'll look something right.
I am.
Yeah, I think that would be the ARB's, uh, recommendation.
So on the first page here, something like this.
Yes. Rectangular, green, white, orange, left and an indication. An indication of how many apartments may be there. Multiple.
Yeah, left or right. There were some homes that it won't work, but the doors, yeah. Uh, Zach Paul's house is a good example where you'll have to, uh, meander a little.
But the doors on valley street are set right out.
Sorry.
Obviously.
But typically left, right, if it can't be accommodated. And that way we can tell the chief or any of the first responders, look on the left or if not to the right of the door. And there should be a marker. And then we'll do the best we can to mark the posts for those properties that have long driveways.
It didn't work. Thank you.
All right, you know, thank you so much.
Thank you.
But I appreciate it.
Absolutely. And so with that, we'll move to pod B. Um, I'll be super brief. Well. That doesn't bother me. No, it's all right. So, uh, Claire and I did, uh, our section of inventory. We began, um, up the hill, came down and we took the east side of town.
Okay.
So we made kind of a, you know, back. But, uh, this year we did exclude, uh, I've just made a chair decision. We are excluding the house directly above the laundry mat. Not, not the one with the fence, but the one that's off the road and I have to use binoculars to see it.
True.
We will no longer include that in our inventory. It's, yeah.
Um, I agree with that. That's similar to the wash.
Yeah.
For it, if you can't see it, you can't really assess. Well, you can't assess.
Um, and then, uh, the same going with, uh. I think it's old poplar spring. It's the cutoff right next to Mr. Quick. Um, we do not include that either as that falls what I would be with semi closely to a private driveway for the homes and that's. For this there. Um, so we, we also excluded that one. Um, if someone out there would like to argue with me.
With cameras. We can. But, yeah, so a reminder to, uh, council, it it's it's the youth from a public right. So, uh, if if that's me, both are out there, just remind, that'll be a reminder. And then Alex has done it a previous time and, uh, I sat in on two of these. So if you have a question, reach out. And I got keys to the four. Uh, the gate is broken, but, uh, more than that. He's the old F one fifty.
I drove this one yesterday. You're on my girlfriend's truck. I know that would be a pretty.
Well, you can all just ask someone. One of us is sometimes on.
It's thirty five hundred. Want to drink your battery.
So. Um, yeah, so, uh, it went pretty smoothly. We were able to knock it out in about three hours.
Yeah, um, yeah, let's start.
I shot the text last week. I don't know if you got it or not.
Well, no, I didn't.
Okay, let me make sure. Catch your number.
If if you have questions, I will have my cell on me. Honestly, if you just want to let me know the day that you guys decide, I'll make sure I.
We can do this. I got another ten minutes on my free time. I go.
I I think it's probably best to keep it in the pair. Um, yeah, I I've never done it solo, so, yeah. Um.
Four, three, four, uh, two, oh, seven, thirty four, eighty five.
All right, I missed your text. And whatever time it was, we, I don't know, I'm sure about my.
Don't text me because I, I don't. I'm I'm ancient now. Very impressive.
That'll work.
Call me.
Okay, good time, bad time, scoot, tell me.
Anytime. I know what you mean. So with that being said, yeah, uh, oh, uh, not quite. Uh, as chair, I will be, uh, canceling our upcoming meeting for July. We will reconvene in August. Uh, simple raising the fourth falls on Thursday, our meeting day. It's easier to cancel than to try to reset it all. Uh, yep, so see you in August and we might have. Uh, yep, so we'll see you in August, and we'll have.
I move that we need a second.
All in favor?
I, I.
All right. Good to be around us, so about thirty minutes, not even thirty minutes, good day. So, that, those.
You're a gentleman.
So, not quite there, we have to work within, it's more of just like a, uh.